I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to beautiful Half Moon Bay in the September 11th Planning Commission meeting for 2018. Can I get a roll call, please?
Absolutely. I will start with Commissioner DeMone.
Here.
Commissioner Evans.
Here.
And Chair Hernandez.
I am present.
And then calling in will be Vice Chair Holt, and absent this evening is Commissioner Benjamin.
So, the next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes, but I believe we do not have quorum for approval of minutes. So, we will move on? Okay, so, getting back to our agenda. We're going to, you wanted to juggle some things around on the agenda?
Tonight, we're going to suggest that we take the study session item first and the public hearing item second, so that we can accommodate Commissioner, Vice Chair Holt, who'll be calling in for that coastal development permit item.
I think that's fine.
All right, very good.
Question?
Yes.
Could we also do the Director's Report and Planning Commission Communications?
Absolutely.
Yes, before the, okay.
Yep.
Okay, so, we're going to start with the study session.
All right, so, I will just introduce this item briefly, and then we will, that's okay.
Point of order. I don't have any public comment cards, but now is the time for public comment.
Thank you.
Not seeing anyone wishing to make a public comment.
Oh.
I'd like to move on to the study session.
All right, so, tonight, before you is a study session for the Highway One South Main Street Gateway Project. This was a project that you looked at for the signalization and improvements, including bicycle and pedestrian facilities back in November 2011. Conditions of approval and future considerations included landscaping and gateway appropriate signage. We have been working on that, and one of the things that occurred along the way was that we really needed a local touch, so we have, the city has brought on Kukuchi, and we're going to have a presentation in a minute from Tom Conroy regarding this proposal. We do note in your staff report, a number of design components that we were encouraging the landscape architect to consider, and this was in collaboration with, with their own, their own thoughts about this, but a few of them were directly related to the Planning Commission's feedback on the signalization project design, specifically including consideration of the historic alignment of Highway One. And then, a lot of this is also in the context of work that we've done discussing the town boulevard concept. The wayfinding, the image, the coastal and ag context of landscaping and making for a memorable gateway as well as corridor. And with that, we'll go ahead and turn it over to Tom, and thank you for, for presenting this for us tonight, Tom.
Just, Tom, sorry, before that, maybe a few bits of information here. What is the timing for completion of the project? Do we have funding? What is Planning Commission's role in this in the future? So, maybe give us some background, kind of help us formulate this.
I will share the process background, which is that you will see this again. This, this study session, we're really looking forward to your, your feedback on, on this design package. We intend to check in with City Council about it as well, but it needs to have a coastal development permit issued to it, and that would be a public hearing. It's, it's a requirement for it, so you will see this again at a public hearing. Now, the city engineer is here, he can answer your other questions about funding and timing. Maz Yarbozar-Ginia is in the back row. Maybe Maz can come up and just give a little bit of input on where we are with the funding and the design development with Caltrans.
Good evening, everyone. I go by Maz to make it easier for folks. For the south project, we have about $3 million of funding through various grants. We have, we are, we are looking to get this project out to bid in the next few months, so we're looking at a 2019 construction start, whether that's spring, summer, but somewhere in the more acclimate weather.
Thank you. Are we ready? All right, all right, Tom.
That was me.
And welcome back.
Thank you. So, the, the city got in touch with us in late summer, midsummer, as Jill said, because they wanted to develop some of the negative space that surrounded the alignment that was approved of the new Main Street, Higgins, and Highway One signalization project that's coming forward. And so, when we, you know, we were really excited to work on this. It's, you know, Half Moon Bay doesn't have a, a stop or a start, especially when you're coming in from the south, and so, we thought it was a, a neat opportunity to, to, to take a look at creating some sort of iconic entry for the city. And so, we started out with three goals, and, and one was function. We wanted to create a real sense of entry, and not just an entry to the town, but also to Main Street. I know we, we've all heard the anecdotes from people, "I didn't even know where downtown was. I came to Half Moon Bay, and I thought it was just a Burger King in a Safeway." And so, a, a sense of entry, even on the south end, is, is really going to help people find the heart, the downtown, and, and find their way around, rather than just zipping by on Highway One. The second goal we had was to be respectful of, of the history, the historic alignment of, of Highway One, which became Main Street and then split off many years ago. And the third goal was to, to, to do these improvements in an aesthetic way, in a way that really visually connects whatever the new improvements are to established attractive things that we have here in town right now. And so, the site plan that was included in your packet, and I've reproduced it here, is our, our, i- is what we came up with. And there's a, there's a couple of layers that work towards this intersection. Just to say upfront, we didn't change any of the alignments, the, the roads, the turning lanes, the medians, the crosswalks. Those are all as they were when you saw it last in November. We took those as the given, and we worked inwards from those spaces. There's a couple of things you'll notice right away, is that we have an extension of these trees along here, and an extension of the trees on the other end of Main Street here. Those are supposed to be Metro Sedaris trees. They're the same type of trees that are already, that really go up for about a half a mile on South Main Street. That's the, the first level of the, the entry feature. It's kind of bracketing this intersection. The second level, and you can see them dashed in, you might be able to see them better on your plans, behind, between, in front of the trees, and on the way to the intersection are bermed mounds that back up to these parking signs right here. And we'll talk a little bit more in depth about the signs as, as we get a little bit further on. But that's, that's the second stage. So, we're going from these, these tall trees down to a second stage of enclosure, and really kind of scaling the intersection down, and, and bringing the experience of, of entering Half Moon Bay down to the pedestrian and, and the human scale level. All around these areas are swaths and big masses of wide flowing plantings, grasses and ground covers. These are, are really to connect the site, the successful plantings along the, the medians on, on further up in Highway One and going up on 92, and also to, to evoke the grasslands on wave crest across the street. You can see those plantings aren't just limited to the east side of the highway, but also extend across the medians here, and then into the little parking, or the little planting strip between the edge of the road and the existing trail on the west side of the highway. I want to talk about these signs now. So, the signs that you see here are about 50 feet wide and about eight feet tall, and they are curving in two directions. They're curving away from the intersection, so there's that concave approach, kind of forming the, the brackets or the parentheses on the intersection. They're also curving from, from bottom to top. And we're, we're aware that there's, there's a, a potential for this half moon to be treated as a gimmick, but what we were thinking of it as really more to, to evoke the, the mountains and the hills. As you come up to the intersection, you'll see the hills have that same rounded character. If you look closely, you know, I've got a close-up. We have, they're, they're graded. There are different colors that transition from the bottom to the top in, in irregular forms. And that's really to evoke some of the very specific character that you see in, in, in the bluffs. You get those uneven striations that go from the bottom up to the top, that, that sort of weathered approach. And we thought one way to accomplish that on these walls was to use different layers or different colors of concrete, slightly different shades as they get higher and higher, and then use a heavy sand blast. And I guess there's no, there's no zoom on here, is there? But you can see that there are wave patterns through the walls right there. So, we pictured this as really two signs. There's the sign on the north end of the intersection that faces south, and that's really the, the Half Moon Bay Gateway. It's the city name, maybe the city logo. On the south side is more of the wayfinding sign. This is the one that may point to the historic downtown or South Main Street. The, the text is, is still to be determined. One of the things we, we thought would be neat on the south side is this, this current offense, changeable, maybe seasonally changeable, or six, seven times a year to advertise things like the Pumpkin Festival, but also Night of Lights or any of those events, community events, things that would draw someone's eye if they're, they're sitting there at the intersection. With these concepts, we began to develop a pretty rudimentary 3D model to try to get a better idea of how these walls and the berms and the trees are going to work together to really form the gateway here. And I want to caution you that because this is a preliminary review, we didn't do a fully detailed development of all of the planting area. And so, what may look like a large swath of lawn that covers the whole intersection is, is really going to be more like the, the site plan that you saw in the, in your packet. From this angle, you begin to pick up the, the visual extension of Main Street with the, the row of trees that comes out. Also, you begin to pick up on some of the, the birmingham and the character that that gives to, to bracket the intersection. As we get closer to the ground plane, we started to develop the photo simulations of what this could look like. Again, pretty rough, but I think they give you a good idea of the character that this gateway would, would provide. So, this is the, these are the existing conditions, of course, and here you can see the proposed conditions with the birmingham, Main Street continuing north, and the, the new stoplight here at the intersection. You can see the walls as they curve away from the intersection. You can also begin to pick up how these, the curved wall and the berms are beginning to pick up on some of these hills behind. And this is, this is pretty neat here, because you can see this transition where you're going from the, the coastal hills beyond, you're stepping down to these trees that really form this funnel, this view towards Main Street, and then you have the, the planted berms and the signs in front of that. Here's a, a little further north, looking a little more in line with the highway. These are the existing conditions, and then the proposed conditions here. If you remember from the CDP for the intersection, there's a new turning lane here, so this does get a little bit wider at the intersection, but you can, you can begin to see how the, the scale of these walls really fits well within the intersection. Looking up Higgins from across the road, there's another simulation of how these walls are, are just helping to scale some of these, these bigger structures like that firehouse and, and the hills, and make it a little bit more welcoming. And here, looking south, you can see off in the distance, the Johnson House off over here, and then with the proposed improvements, this is, of course, we're just seeing the south wall right here, but it, it's really, really forming a, an entrance to the, to the intersection there. Back to the site plan. One, one other thing that we didn't want to forget, and I know, John, you were here on, on the commission at the time, and I think it's been discussed since then, but there has been discussion from the city on potential arch signs, roadway signs. We, it was not asked of us to develop any ideas or further these concepts, but we did want to ensure that the improvements that, that we may be making here at this intersection wouldn't preclude any future installation of an arch sign like this. And so, just to remind you, this is the one, I think we, the Planning Commission saw this four or five years ago, and we really roughly modeled it in. This is about the location, right at the end of Main Street, right there. And we blocked it into our model in a couple of locations. It's pretty crude, but it does still fit. There's nothing that, nothing of the proposed improvements with the signs and the birmingham that really would prevent or create any conflict with this archway. We've got one other view looking up there in front of the fire station. So, it's, it's still framing that Main Street view. It's, it's just another level. But of course, the need for and for the development of that sign is, is another project. It is not something I wanted to distract the discussion with, but I thought it was worth mentioning that, that we're not trying to design in a vacuum here. And with that, that's the concept design, in a nutshell.
Tom, could you go back to the existing conditions a few slides back? Keep going.
In which direction?
Uh, keep going. One more. This one. So, can you just toggle between these two for a second? What I'm looking at is, when you look at the signage, like the Half Moon Bay, it's an eight-foot tall sign, standing on a berm. I'm just curious, like, when, when the cars are turning right, so if you toggle backward and you look at the car height, so the signage of Half Moon Bay would be well above the height of a normal car sitting on the median of the street. Just, I'm just, like, if you, yeah, if you toggle back and forth, if you can imagine those cars parked in front.
Yeah, I, I, I would, I would encourage a little bit of caution as, as to taking these photo simulations too literally. Conceptually, the, the, well, I, I do want to clarify. The signs don't sit on a berm, but the, the berm is actually behind them. The signs are at the ground plane. In fact, there's some birmingham up, slight birmingham up to them. So, from the sidewalk right there, the wall is eight feet tall. As far as the, the location and potential interference with sightlines, ultimately, the city engineer and Caltrans, presumably, will, will be making those final determinations. But we are confident that where they are placed on site, they are fully outside of Caltrans right of way, and, and they far surpass the, the sightline, the sight dis, triangle distance requirements. Grading-wise and, and photo simulation, things get a little bit nebulous.
Yeah, just a concern about, there's two concerns. One is obstructing the sightlines, and two is obstructing the sign as you're heading north on Highway One when cars are in front of it. So, those are the two concerns. Just something to consider, if you have a sign that the lettering is going to be about, what, six feet? The top of the lettering is going to be six feet high, so it's going to be above most cars, so it's, it's a minor thing. Why would you?
Actually, Rick, just to be clear, I think the edge of this curb right here, this is actually the stop line. So, cars, when the, the light is red, will actually be right here.
Very good.
Because there's a, there's a big, deep, I don't know what they're called, the green painted bicycle zone in front of that.
What, what, what have you thought about with respect to lighting on the sign, if any?
Really high-intensity cleat lights, op lights, no. You know, we haven't, you know, conceptually, I can tell you, I think it would be nice if, if the signs had some illumination. We certainly don't want to blast these walls with light. Specifically, we haven't, we haven't gotten really far along in that. I imagine that's something that we would have to cover for the eventual CDP. But we have discussed backlighting the letters, so if the letters on the signs stand off the walls, if it's uniformly backlit, we can get a nice wash just behind Half Moon Bay or Historic Main Street or, or whatever. But we don't, we, we don't anticipate a, a, you know, series of, of wall washes to have the whole thing blow up. It's just, it's not, it's not appropriate for the location. It's not appropriate for the transition from more urban to more rural areas.
I don't, do you have any other questions? I have a couple others, but I'll. Do you have any other questions?
No question, just, just comments. So, if you have questions, Rick.
Have you put, I mean, I'm sure you've put a ton of thought into the lettering, black versus white. Any thoughts on why you're using black versus white in terms of what stands out or what's visible?
No, 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 we really haven't. We attempted with, with the, the font choice here, we attempted to get close to the font that's been used on a lot of the wayfinding signs, and, and again, that was used in the, the archway.
I see that, yeah.
As far as the color, no. I, I don't know if it would actually be black. It might be more of a bronze, more of a, a, a dark bronze, earth tone.
But something that would have contrast with the sign.
But I'm, I'm just, I'm just riffing off the top of my hat. I haven't really thought about color.
So, the only other question I have is when I look at this, by the way, the 3D imaging really helps to convey what's going on here, so thank you for doing that. And I love the fact that you put the archway in as a design element, so that we can think about how this is going to fit in. The, the concern or question I have is, the historic downtown sign, I don't want to get into designing something, but you look at this historic downtown sign, if you can switch to the view facing southward? It, it kind of says, "This is historic downtown," and it looks, you're looking at the Johnston House when you see the historic downtown, so you're, it's kind of confusing to me as a wayfinding or something, because you're, you're now leaving the city and there's nothing in front of you visually. So, it's, and I don't want to get too old. You should put an arrow here. But to me, is, is wayfinding, I, I, I get confused because it doesn't, again, people say, "Well, what happened to Half Moon, downtown Half Moon Bay? Is it this old farm and the Johnston House?"
It's a ghost town. That's why nobody can find it.
So, that, that was, I mean, that's just the observation. I guess that's more of a comment than anything else, but I like the idea. Just the placement of the sign doesn't really convey. I mean, I like the idea of the temporary sign and having that, some, some kind of element there. It makes a lot of sense, but I, I don't think this helps us find historic downtown or...
Do you think if it's a historic Main Street or South Main Street or something like that, that might be more appropriate?
I, I don't know if it's, if it's, it really depends on how the sign is laid out, right? If, if the sign sort of is more oriented, yeah, I mean, if the sign was more oriented in a way where it looked like this is the entrance to downtown Half Moon Bay, right now, it's, it's not, it looks like it's the entrance to Parisima Higgins Creek, and so somehow, it's not conveying, to me, historic downtown. It's, it's, historic downtown's actually on the other side of the street, but you've got the sign that says Half Moon Bay, which I think is actually great. I don't think you need to, but maybe the, the arch in the future says downtown Half Moon Bay. That might be the way to deal with it. I'm not sure this element facing southward, maybe you say leaving Half Moon Bay would be the more.
You missed it.
You missed downtown.
No, I, I, I appreciate that. And, you know, the, the actual language on the signs is, is something that we, we plugged in a few different things trying to settle in, at least at this conceptual level, settle on something that seemed, that seemed right. I think there's some flexibility with the, the specific orientation of, of the signs. And I think, you know, possibly some combination of adjusting that orientation and the language as we go through design development on this may, may help address that concern. Great, thank you.
And have you considered adding benches or picnic tables or anything like that to design? You've now created a beautiful space.
Yeah, I, no. I mean, I, I frankly, it's not a great place to sit. It's, it's a nice, it's a nice thing to look at. It's a nice entry feature, but I think there are a lot of other nice places to sit. You know, more often than not, the light's going to be green, north and south, and people are going to be flying by 55 miles an hour. And I'm not sure that a bench or a picnic table, looking, looking off at that, is, is going to be all that welcoming. I'm hoping, and I think the city's hoping, is, is part of the long-term benefits of, of this whole project, is that the crosswalks there are going to help people find nice places to, to picnic out on the bluffs.
Yep. It's just a, there aren't a lot of places to sit in between Cameron's and what's now Citrella, so it's just, anyway. But this is a great design. Thank you. I don't have any other questions.
So, my, my comments, in fact, we're going to echo some for Rick, although I do miss the pumpkin. But that said, I mean, the, the issue that I have is I, I like the landscaping. I like the look. Problem is, what I, I don't see anything that suggests, other than, at least what you have now, that this is an entry point. I mean, the, the archway might eventually, but I, I can't see people coming by at 55 miles an hour, also say, "Oops, this is downtown Half Moon Bay," and, and turn in there. So, I'm, I'm really not sure, perhaps signage further south, you know, and I'm not sure that's Caltrans issue or something of that, that might say for downtown Half Moon Bay, turn right at the next intersection or something like that. But I, at least my picture, driving that way, doesn't suggest, wow, if I turn here, I, I will get to historic downtown Half Moon Bay. But I, I do like the landscaping. I like the feel, at least relative to what we have now. Of course, anything's better than what we have now. So, again, I, I do like the design, but the, kind of the concept of a, this is a gateway that's going to make me, this is for us that's going to make me, this is first time I'm coming north on Highway one, I can't see anything, at least from this intersection, that will tug me in that direction.
Thank you for that, Les. You know, when we're doing our work, we're so focused on our chunk of this overall project. But I think Jill's going to mention, there was additional signage proposed, standard signage, Caltrans-type signage, both south and north.
We can, when we come back with this, we can show you those layers, but there's a sign now that's going to be replaced. It's really the Chamber of Commerce sign, it's up on a couple poles. It has, it's going to be reformatted in the new logo branding. It'll be a lot easier to read, and it will be quite a bit south of this, so it will be the first cue that you're getting close. And then a Caltrans sign, we're hoping actually to have it replaced because it's quite faded, and it's the kind of sign where you'll see lodging, food, you know, the typical highway sign, but it's, because of that, I think people look for those, and so that will be second, and then you'll get to this. So there'll be a sequence.
One more comment, I think kind of Rick raised that. Somehow, I think it's important to orient vehicles towards Main Street rather than Higgins, Parisima, and I'm not sure there's any type of landscaping or other way to orient them there. Again, signs, I'm sure, might help, but now you're turning here, and you're at a Y. I gather if you're looking down Higgins, Parisima, you're not seeing anything but the Johnston House unless, you know, this is downtown Half Moon Bay, versus if you're kind of glancing down Main Street, you see more down there. But again, I'm not sure what, from a landscaping standpoint, you can impact that kind of visual orientation.
Well, we'll definitely look at that as we go through design development and see what we can do to ensure that people don't end up wandering around Burley Murray, wondering where downtown Half Moon Bay is. I think the new alignment, though, is, the new road alignment is going to help a lot because it's much less of a Y, or will be much less of a Y, than it will be more of a natural curve off of Highway one onto Main Street. Thanks, Les.
Thank you, Tom, for the presentation. It's really professional, and you guys have really done a great job. In particular, well, I guess I have to disclose, I was also invited to see this in their office when it was in progress. It was totally volunteerism, and I don't have any vested interest in it. And it really helped me get a better grasp of what you're doing here. This is a massive intersection. It's the equivalent of a six-lane highway. It's like El Camino Real. And the scale of that is, and the pavement is going to be impactful. And this solution here does a great job to help the scale of that, really scale down more to what the town is like, and I really appreciate that, compared to just sculptures or, you know, some sort of token signs. And then I especially like that the visual corridor, as you're coming up south from Highway one, takes your eye into Main Street. I think that's just brilliant, to do that with the trees like that and these New Zealand Christmas trees, you know, grow like weeds here, so that, easy to maintain them, they're not going to use a lot of water, and you guys are great with that, and appreciate it. I also really like that it could have or not have a gateway sign, whatever you call that, sort of archway sign that's been bandied around forever, you know, different, people have different anecdotal visions of what they think ought to happen here. And so this could work either way, and that's great, too, so that there's that flexibility that really wouldn't impact this design. And Les, I really agree with you, and I hear what Jill is saying, that the signs coming up north are really where we're going to get people's attention, that they're coming to an intersection that has some importance. And I'm hoping that these signs, I guess whatever Caltrans does, they do, but whatever signs we have control over, for example, and this is not a solution but a suggestion, that there's a standard shape for historic markers, and if that was an even bigger scale and people see that, they go, "Oh, historic," and something's coming up, and it draws their attention, we don't even need the words that much. People go, "Oh, what's historic?" And they start trying to take a look around. So in that signage, before you approach the intersection, you're exactly, I agree with that, what you're saying. It's my opinion that the, there should be lighting of these two walls, but it needs to be a glow, and I think you can do that, so that at dusk or when it's foggy, which, you know, when's that ever here, that the signs actually do show even in dusk, but it's just a glow. It's not like Burger King sign or something like that. And then in the evening, I imagine there is, like there already is, there's going to be intersection lighting that Caltrans is going to do, and I imagine, other than maybe we can ask them what colors they are, we have very little choice of what Caltrans does. Maybe we do. It'd be great if we could point to, they do this in Denmark, can we order those particular, you know, the shape of the stoplights and the sign, and it's just, we don't need to elaborate on it. We'll get to that as we come forward, but, so there is already going to be some lighting. So these signs, but if the whole sign glows, then if there's other accentuating lighting for the lettering, it'll stand out a little bit more, but you'll see them through the evening as well. And that's when we're really, when people don't see the rest of Main Street. And I don't think that it's going to change the glare or anything else done from other lighting. But there needs to be, I think, enough glow over the whole surface to compete with the pedestrian downlighting that's going to happen at the intersection. I'm nervous about weighing in about this archway sign. I guess this doesn't get written into the gesture I'm making here.
Future consideration.
But, and I'm not being totally flippant, I mean, we already, you know, when you drive down Highway 101, you get to Gonzalez, and you see this giant water tank that says, "Welcome to Gonzalez." Well, we already have the fire tower there, and that's a perfect opportunity. We could maybe use that as, I mean, it's a signage that's already there, it's big, and with a little bit of adjustment. So, and I'm not saying that's a solution, but I think there are a lot of opportunities to study in depth, how we would do any kind of archway configuration here, maybe even have competitions for that, and not just go through the predictable process of RFPs and getting a sign that's, and we've even talked about at length, what is the sign representing? You know, what is the town of Half Moon Bay? It's not really a coastal town, it's not really a farm town, it's kind of, it's a unique thing and deserves its own unique interest. But I'm really proud of what you've done here. It's a really great job, and we're lucky that you guys have done this. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. I want to, thanks, John. I want to echo John's comments. The visual corridor you've created, where you have the ability to see any future arch or at least see that there's actually this Main Street, the fact that you've left that open is actually a very, I think, a very strong design element, which leads, you know, it supports the future archway, so I really like that. I don't know what kind of control we have over the berm, and if there's anything we can put there that just sort of points to downtown, historic downtown, that might be the place to put it, in between, the median in between the highway or the sign, where the light is, that actually might be the better place to just sort of have an arrow. I don't want to get into, I'm a little concerned about having something that's too, I like the natural elements that you've put in here, I like the curvature, it has a very organic feel to it, a curve reminiscent of a half moon buried in the ground. I mean, you could almost, you could actually almost turn it into a half moon in the ground, but I really like the curve. I like the idea of having the lettering be brighter or have some kind of glow to it. I'm a little concerned about something that's glowing, because then that's a non, like the whole sign glowing, I think that's a non, I would be a little concerned about that, because it doesn't have that, doesn't make you feel like it's a farm town by the beach. It makes you feel like you're more in the Silicon Valley or Las Vegas or something like that, so.
No neon.
What's that?
No neon.
And please, no.
Yeah, I really appreciate what you said, because it helps me better, you know, I'm better at drawing than, you know, describing something. When I say glow, it reminds me of when I drive north from San Gregorio. There's times when you see the cliffs in the right sunlight, that they really stand off. And maybe that's a better way to describe how I would see that you would do some artificial lighting on these, to give it the same contrast that you see when you see the bluffs coming from south.
Or something that captures the golden light, right? When you get the golden light, it'll be amazing. All right.
Jill, what do you need from us, other than, this is nice, kind of, go ahead, what's the process going forward?
Sure. Couple quick notes. Just want to make sure if there were any, I don't see any speaker cards, but if anybody, we switched the order of our agenda, so we don't know if anyone came to speak on this item and wasn't ready to prepare a card.
We're opening it for public comment.
And I just had one question, and it's, do you want to divert traffic from Highway one onto South Main Street?
I think the answer is yes.
Yes. Because it seems to me that if you increase the line, that there's a slight traffic.
Oh, for the speaker's benefit, we've had a number of discussions in the past about people can't find historic downtown, and Tom alluded to that earlier. When he was on the Planning Commission, we've had many anecdotes where people said, "Where is that downtown Half Moon Bay?" So I think that is the point, is to make sure people can find the downtown, find the Main Street, the Chamber of Commerce, and the local businesses have asked that we do things to direct more traffic to Main Street. Please.
Hello, I'm Greg Jamison. I'm sorry I didn't get here until just now, so I didn't get to see, I assume there's a couple angles of that picture? I just, if I could, I'd like to see just the other angle. I think it looks fantastic, first of all, from what I do see, and I do like the idea of the light there. I've spoken with a lot of people, and they're real concerned about turning south onto Highway one, and that's going to be a huge benefit, but I really like the architectural design.
I'm sure we could flash through things pretty quickly, but as the property owner adjacent to it, I'd encourage you guys to just have the conversation.
Oh, no, I just, it's a beautiful design, and I didn't see it in the material online, so I was just hoping to see what it looked like.
Yeah, we'll make it available online.
Okay, thank you.
Are we good?
I want to sum up, because you're-
Are there any other public comments? Okay, closed public comments.
Right. Okay, so thank you to our landscape architect. We really have enjoyed working with Tom and his team, and we're delighted when this design began to take shape, and we're glad it was so well-received by you as well. What I think I heard you say is we need to just relook at some of the alignment and especially copy and the cues that need to be in place for the sign on the south side of the intersection. We want to take into account the other signage, north and south of this intersection, and we can share that with you. Lighting is very important for the overall design context and quality of this implementation, and we can imagine that the explanations that you've had around that are really helpful and easy to visualize. We may be looking at how to mock up a little bit of a story pole installation, that the architect can help us out, and maybe our public works staff can put something together. We just really, for that southern side in particular, I think we need to take a peek at that, so we'll let you know if that goes out there, so you can look at it. Again, we'll see City Council, and we will see you again with a lot more detail for actual permit review at a hearing. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Okay. Thanks, Tom. Great project. Okay, we're going to close this item, and we're going to, we're going to move to the Planning Commissioner, the Planning Director's comments, and then public, or comment by the, or communications from the Planning Commission. Jill, have you got anything for us?
I have a brief update. Your next meeting on September 25th, we will be bringing you the Stilaski Gonzales LUP amendment that was initiated at your last meeting, and that is noticed, and we've been actively working on that. On October 9th, we are preparing for a study session for the Hyatt Hotel with their new project architect, and we also are hoping to be able to bring the historic barn project to you, the barn that's behind the jail. The historic society has been working on a design for using the barn space as a larger museum relative to the, still keeping the jail. And it does require a coastal development permit, and historic review, of course, was very important. Last week, I approved a coastal development permit for Carter Park for a temporary event for five years, similar to what we've done for Shakespeare in the Park. This is for the city's end-of-summer concert, and we have to issue such a permit, and we require exclusion fencing and other things because we have habitat in that area. So it's something that we take extra care with than what we might normally do in one of, like, MacDutra, for example. City Council, last week, we had the second first reading of the accessory dwelling unit ordinance, and they moved it along, so we will be having our second reading on September 18th. From there, it will go to the Coastal Commission, we'll keep you posted. And we introduced concepts for a housing work plan to council on September 4th. We'll be bringing you some of those components later, after your October 23rd session, which is going to coincide with our second community conversation about housing. It will be in the Ted Adcock Community Center. I introduced that to you at the last meeting. In a meeting or two, we'll share some more preparation materials. We actually have a listening guide. We're really encouraging full participation of the Planning Commission, and excited for you to see that we're bringing in an architect to do some, to present some materials on diverse housing types, so it'll be, it'll be great. That's all I have. Thank you.
Are there any Planning Commissioner communications?
I have a question concerning the city emails. Okay, number one, I just got something this evening that said, "Total control, password." Do we need new passwords, or what's the situation on emails?
No, so there was an update that was run on all of the city-issued Commissioner emails. Apparently, our spam sourcing filter was actually kicking back a lot of emails that you guys have been potentially getting, so our IT's gone through that today and fixed that, so that's probably what you're seeing, is that it's been reset in the filter. So I would expect to see a few more emails come through or invites to whatever you see out there.
With regards, so I have one Planning Commission communication. With regards to the meeting on, the upcoming Planning Commission meeting, I am going to be on a plane at that time, so we might want to just check if we have quorum for the upcoming meeting. September 25th, I am going to be on a plane, like, waiting for it to take off. Happy to notice the Boeing 777, but I don't think that's a public space, so.
So through the chair, we're going to get Vice Chair Holt on the phone now, so we can move on to our next item and give Commissioner Evans a chance to make an announcement.
Please.
So having no vested interest, but ironically, because it's a requirement to live in the city of Half Moon Bay to be on the commission here, it's also, if I live a certain distance of projects, I have to recuse myself, and our residence is within 500 feet of this next project, so I respectfully recuse myself. Thank you for changing the agenda.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
See you, John. Okay, so we are opening the first item on our agenda, which is a coastal development permit and architectural review for 601 Main Street. Scott, take us away.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and members of the Planning Commission. Commissioner Holt from, on the phone. I'll give a quick, quick presentation on this project. It's 601 Main Street. Here's a slide showing the aerial photograph of the site and surrounding area. The site's on the corner of Main Street and Miramontes. And the current business was established back in 2013 and included a five-year limitation, which is now due to expire. The site, before that, was vacant between 2010 and 2013. And before that, was occupied by an antique garden supply store operator. This slide indicates the site plan that was submitted with the application. And not a whole lot of change from what was previously approved by the Planning Commission back in 2013. Some notable, you know, the slight changes include demolition of the bowling ball run, relocation of a tree that's currently under a guy wire here for the utility pole closer to the corner. And that's essentially it. It's all the same as what was approved by the Planning Commission back in 2013. Let's see, actually. So the permits requested include a coastal development permit and architectural review. And, let's see, just going through my... Now, as far as the analysis goes, the project itself is in conformance with the general plan and local coastal land use plan. The downtown specific plan does have provisions encouraging the, let's see, the diversity and eclecticism of architectural styles along Main Street, which this project clearly aligns with. As far as zoning goes, there is a provision in our zoning ordinance that requires the Planning Commission to make a determination whether or not the proposed outdoor retail use is consistent with the underlying zoning designation and development standards for the commercial downtown zoning district, which previously the Planning Commission did agree that it is. So, with that, staff is supportive of the proposed project. We are recommending approval without a time limitation at this time, as opposed to the previous review. And a lot of that is based on that we have not received any negative feedback on the business, and as a matter of fact, we have received some compliments about the, you know, the particular business in downtown. We recommend that the Planning Commission give the applicant, business owner, an opportunity to speak, take public comments, evaluate any items that have been brought up, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Very good. I don't have any questions. Do you have any questions, Les? Brian, do you have any questions?
None for me.
Would the applicant like to say anything? I don't see the applicant here. Oh, please. Please make sure the green light is on and speak into the microphone, so the folks at home can hear you.
Hi, I'm Leslie Hansen, owner of Odyssey. I don't really have, I can just answer any questions, or I don't have much to say. I think Scott explained it well, so. We would just like to continue using the space out there to, you know, do activities and kind of just continue what we do, and it's...
I'm sad that you're tearing down the bowling ball run.
I, yeah, it's definitely, if I could make it work still, I would, it would stay up. But we did achieve, you know, the world record for the world's largest marble run, so.
Maybe put a historical...
We were successful in that. The upkeep, the maintenance, you know, is kind of, I think it's lived its life.
Maybe you can get a historical marker there. Very good. No, it's a good project. I don't have any questions. I don't think any of my other commissioners do.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
It's a great project, and I love, I love what you've done with that lot, so.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Do we have any public comments? I have no public comment cards, and the members of the audience who are present are shaking their head in fear at being called up to the lectern. So I will close public comments and take it to the Planning Commission. Les, Brian, Les, do you have any question, comment?
Just comments. I was on the commission when the initial project was put before us, and certainly was a significant improvement from what we had in that lot before, seeing some development. Obviously makes that corner more attractive than it was before. Long term, hopefully, I would hope that our next plan is conducive to both having commercial and residential downtown. This looks like a good lot in the future for something like that, but obviously, economics dictate things like that. So in the interim, I have no problem with having a limited time span. Certainly, this Odyssey has been getting good press. I often see people there on weekends, so I'm certainly for extending this permit with a small number of changes that were indicated, so.
Brian, do you have anything that you'd like to share on the project?
No, I would echo those comments and the comments that, you know, I think Odyssey's been a great addition to Main Street, and, yeah, I'm supportive of this.
Okay. I'm supportive of the project as proposed and the no time limit as well, so. Can I get a motion?
I move the motion, the recommendation.
I will, second.
Can I get a voice vote or a roll call vote?
We'll start with Commissioner DeBarn.
Yes.
Vice Chair Holt.
Yes.
And Commissioner, I'm sorry, Chair Hernandez.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mission, the motion passes. The item is over, and I think that's the end of our Planning Commission meeting, so thank you all.
I move we adjourn to make a formal motion.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We did it in under, we did it in under one hour. Congratulations.